Okay, it's 7:00 PM. Welcome to the Planning Board Meeting for the Town of Pembroke. It's Monday, August 11th, 2025. Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through an audio recording, which will be used to ensure an accurate record of proceedings produced in the minutes of the meeting. All comments made in open session will be recorded. PAC TV is providing this service live on Comcast Xfinity Government Access Channel 9. Those without cable, visit YouTube for live streaming. Board Member James Noon is participating via remote participation in accordance with the requirements of 940 CMR 29 dot 10 via speakerphone due to geographic distance. All votes during this meeting will be made via roll call. All right, so first on the agenda, we're going to open two, two public hearings, but we're going to immediately continue them to a future date, and that date is September 22nd, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And there will be no discussion or testimony at this time, apart from a vote to extend the decision deadline, but I do want to let everyone know that September 22nd is the date for those public hearings. So go to the town website if you want to get some details. The agenda's posted 48 hours in advance of that meeting, so the information will be made available to you. Also, Sue, correct me if I'm wrong, but the plans are up on the website if you want to look at them.
Correct.
Okay, great. So let's get the public hearing opened up and continued. So this is a public hearing for Weathervein seeking modification of its AQCD special permit under Section 5 dot 13 dot 1 dot A of the zoning bylaws and site plan approval number SP 3 dash 22 under Section 5 dot 7 located at 94 West Elm Street. So I'll accept a motion to continue the public hearing until September 22nd, please.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing until September 22nd.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Heather.
Hi.
Hi, Dan.
Dan? Jim?
Aye.
Okay. Alicia?
Aye.
Stefan?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay, and I'm an aye. All right, good. So we've got another public hearing to open up. This is the public hearing for the application of Weathervein at Pembroke Country Club LLC of 190 Old Derby Street, Suite 311, Him, Mass. for approval of a definitive subdivision plan entitled Weathervein at Pembroke Country Club. The proposed subdivision is located at 94 West Elm Street, Pembroke, Mass., and consists of 177 new single-family homes on approximately 244 acres. The property is in the residential A zoning district and is shown on assessor's map B11 Lot 33. So I will entertain a motion to continue.
I'll make a motion to continue until September 22nd.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, Heather.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Alicia.
Aye.
Stefan.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. All right, so we have another site plan tonight that is, has been continued. This is site plan number SP 5 dash 25, proposed contractor bays at 242 Washington Street. This hearing is continued from June 23rd, 2025, and July 14th, 2025, on the application of Cam Mayer, 181 Mount Blue Street, Norwell, requesting site plan approval under the zoning bylaws of the Town of Pembroke, Section 5 dot 7, site plan approval. The applicant proposes to construct a new commercial building with four contractor bays to be built in a similar location to the previously removed building with new utility connections, stormwater infiltration system, septic system, parking lot, and associated site grading. The proposed structure will access Washington Street from the existing access driveway that services the other existing structures located to the rear of the property. Property is located at 242 Washington Street, Pembroke, in Residence Commercial District and Historical Overlay District as shown on assessor's map D13 Lot 16. Okay.
Good evening, my name is Dana Altavello. I am here with Cam Mayer and his father. As you mentioned, this project is located at 242 Washington Street, which is on the northly side of Washington Street on the corner of McDonald Way. It's located within the residential commercial district, as well as the historic district, and consists of approximately 32,500 square feet. Since the last hearing, we worked to address the three items that came up at the hearing. The first one proved challenging, which was to provide more accurate building plans. The applicant reached out to Morton Building, Morton Buildings Inc. They indicated to him to go any further developing architectural plans or building plans, that they would need a 30% deposit on the total building cost, which is a pretty good chunk of change. He just didn't want to commit to that without having the blessing of the board before doing so. But also at the same time, he started, you know, reevaluating the fact that we're proposing four bays in here in a 2,400 square foot building, which put the bays at about 600 square feet, which is fairly small. It's a little bit of a niche market or whatever, so he kind of reevaluated and decided it might be better suited to just break it up into two bays of 1,200 square feet, which gives a little more flexibility. You can have a little more, you know, contractor bay, a little more room for staging and staffing, et cetera. So he's made that, that decision, which kind of works a little bit better with the fact that Morton has decided that they want the 30% down. But the building plans that were originally submitted showed a total of four man doors or pedestrian doors, two in each front corner and then in the rear corners as well. So that provides a total of two pedestrian doors for each bay, as well as the two overhead doors for each bay. Additionally, the, the building plans that are shown, inasmuch as the color, the window orientation and location, the door location orientation, that will all match what he's planning on building, so that is all accurate. The overhead door number is accurate. The only change that he may pursue is providing a 12-foot wide overhead door instead of the 10-foot that's shown, just to provide a little easier access to each bay. But each, each unit will have two bays for access. The second item was lighting specifications for the lights shown in the photometric plans that were provided. We did submit cut sheets of the lights and the lighting fixtures that were used in the photometric plans by Boston Light Source. And then the last item was a final parking breakdown of residential versus commercial. With the reduction in the building from four bays to two bays, that brings the required parking down from four spaces to two spaces. We'll still be proposing to provide eight additional parking spaces, including 1 ADA space, and there will still be overflow parking in this area. Currently, there's 10 spaces in this area. The existing residential structure has a total of four units within it. Two of the units kind of front over here where they've actually created a parking area, so they'll be using that parking area on that side. And then the other two units, it would make sense for them to park over here where they have access. So that would be a total of two units, which would require four spaces. That would leave a total of six spaces for overflow, extra parking for both the commercial building and the residential units. I think that was pretty much all the board was looking for. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Yep. So as part of the conditions, well, it's been added, and Paul, you've, you've recommended we add this to the conditions, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we added number 17, which is detailed architectural plans required prior to the issuance of a building permit. So as once you pull a building permit, you're probably going to spend the 30% you need to spend, right?
Yes, absolutely. That shouldn't be a problem.
Okay. So let me just read that for folks, so they know what we put into the conditions. So prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit final detailed architectural plans prepared by the building manufacturer or qualified design professional. These plans shall include complete elevations, materials, and specifications for all building facades, doors, windows, roof lines, and exterior architectural features. Any other questions from the board recording that? And then the photometric plan from the cut sheet should suffice for a photometric plan.
Assuming the law passed.
Yes.
Two different types, they could go for requirements. Obviously, when we, the town has a chance to review the architectural plans, but they can, we'll see exactly where the warm-onto units will be, and based on the review by both the buildings in your office and in my office, we can attest to the fact that it meets the requirements, so if you need a further photometric plan, there's going to be fine architectural things we can apply.
Okay. And then, any other questions tying up loose ends? Because we covered a lot of this in the prior public hearing. There was another recommended condition on construction activity and shared driveway access. Were you able to review that? Both parties able to review that? You can take the microphone, Paul, if you would, please, so folks can hear you.
Thank you for the record, Paul Brogdon, Seacoast Engineering Review Engineer for the Pembroke Planning Board. I think last month when we were here, we discussed the, the use of the driveway with the further development in the rear and the construction activities that would be required to build a new facility. And I think in many cases, based on the access to the current site and the 24 feet of travel space to get to the rear of the site, there's ample space to work with between signage and quidding things off and still maintain both public and private access to the rear and public safety requirements for emergency issues should they develop. So, and I think there's plenty of pavement between Washington Street and the building that's separate from the driveway itself for material storage and equipment storage, so.
Okay.
There's adequate storage on the spite, you know, space for everything to construct.
And this would also limit construction only between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday?
Correct. Using in accordance with the zoning bylaws.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So what this does is kind of enshrining that into the conditions, so. Has the board had an opportunity to read through the conditions?
I just have one question, because I hate spending money on the Morton building. Has he gotten the historical approval? Because I'm just surprised they're allowing that in the historical.
Yes, they had gotten that about a year ago.
Okay.
So they had their hearing, and they got their approval?
Yes, I believe they were issued the.
Do you know the hearing date? Because I tried to look it up today, and I couldn't find it either.
Yeah, because I pulled Steve's center form, I believe you have it in the file in the address.
Okay. Do we have the, the findings from the Historic District Commission meeting?
I do not.
Okay.
Did you look like the agenda?
They're not supposed to. Yeah, I went through the YouTube videos, but I didn't go back a year. I only went back, because I had asked last time if you guys had gone before Historic Commission. And so I tried to find the video of it today, and I couldn't find it, but that, I didn't go back far enough, it sounds like. Could we, do you want to add that?
Well, I had to take the add that as a condition, because we really shouldn't, it shouldn't be conditional. That should just happen.
Right.
Yeah.
So do, can we just find out the date, like, that it happened?
Yeah, I think we should.
Is it Form 1041 or some number like that?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with what the form number is.
I'm not sure. I don't know either. And who, who did you work with?
Steve.
All right.
I have his number.
Okay. I'll send him an email.
You can continue. I mean, really, that's something we need to know.
Yeah.
We could approve it. I mean, I think we could vote on it, but he, I just don't want, you know, him to spend money on the Morton plans if he hasn't gotten it approved by, by historical, because if they're not going to allow it, then, like, you know what I mean? Like, so the Morton Dulling in the Historic District, I don't know what their findings are, like, or, you know, sometimes they're going to have an issue with that, from my own experience in other towns. I haven't been in front of the Pembroke Historical, so I can't say.
Okay.
But I'm just, you know, looking out for my fellow residents of Pembroke here.
Jim would like to make a point. Sure.
Yeah, this came up many years ago, but, and this came through complement and page, but we are not allowed to condition our approval on the approval of another board.
Right. That's right.
All right, we should continue.
When's the next meeting?
September 8th.
Okay.
Well, we could, he can't get a permit if he doesn't have the approval anyway from historical, so we can still give our approval, it doesn't have to hinge on.
Well, we're also independent, independent boards.
That's what he's saying. We can't, we can't continue based on somebody else.
Right.
We need to give our own decision.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Because the other board has the opportunities.
That's right.
I just had one thing. Is there a second floor still? I thought at the last meeting, there was mention of maybe if there were egress stairs from second levels that may impact the exterior on any.
I'm not aware of a second floor.
So no mezzanine or?
No, no. Just kind of open air contractor bay.
All right, so, go ahead. No, no, please.
So there are two, so there are these, there's going to be basically two sections that are two bays each?
No, it's going to be, they'll have two overhead doors, but there's just going to be two bays.
Oh, there's not going to still be four doors?
No, no. The four bays, it just, it was only 600 square feet.
Four doors, two bays.
Yeah. So yeah, what you said.
Right, but what I'm saying is, how easy is it for them to go in after this and subdivide those two bays into four bays?
Well, they need a building permit.
Yeah, and it would probably be, you know, a minor modification for the site plan.
No, you'd have to add more fire exits and stuff like that.
Yeah, but that's all, the building department, I would think.
Mm-hmm. Yep. That would be in a building department review with code review for commercial space.
All right, so we usually, if the board has read the conditions, feels comfortable with them, we can close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay. Roll call vote, Heather.
We're voting on closing the public hearing?
Closing the public hearing.
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Stefan?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, now we're going to vote on the waivers. So there are three waivers that have been requested from the Planning Board Rules and Regulations, Section 4 dot 15, Development Impact Statement, Section 4 dot 22, Requirement for Traffic Impact Study, and Section 4 dot 2 dot D dot 4, which is Reduction of Front Setback Distance from 100 Feet to 70 Feet. Those have all been addressed by the peer review memo, and I think they make sense. Far less than 250 trips per day here, which, yeah, which, which doesn't require a developmental impact statement, a requirement for a traffic impact study. And then in the memo, it's discussed why the reduction in front setback distance from 100 to 70 feet makes sense. Any other questions from the board on this? All right, hearing done. I'll entertain a motion to accept the waivers as described.
If you move.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, Heather.
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Stefan?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. All right. Now, we need a vote to approve the conditions as presented for 242 Washington Street. So you're asking for a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the conditions as presented for 242 Washington Street.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, Heather.
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Stefan?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. All right, great.
Thank you very much.
We're done.
Have a good evening.
All right, thank you. All right, so let's go to our next agenda item, which is. An informal meeting with Elizabeth Ennis from Apex and Joseph Diotti, who is our DPW Director on the Stormwater Management Regulations Revisions. Thank you, Paul.
Hello, folks. Joe Diotti, DPW's Director.
Hi, Elizabeth Ennis, Apex Project Manager.
I'm interested in this.
Sure, sure. So the DPW has recently been contacted by EPA about getting some new stormwater regulations. It is a requirement of the MS4 permit. It was due, I believe, in 2020. So here we are, 2025, and the town currently doesn't have any stormwater rules and regs. There is an existing bylaw, which is part of the town general bylaw. So we have been hired by the town to review the general bylaw, make sure that it complies with all the regulations and requirements of the MS4 permit for stormwater management regulations, as well as provide a template to the town and some guidance along creation of new stormwater rules and regs. EPA has set a deadline for acceptance of the stormwater rules and regs, as well as making sure that the bylaws comply with the MS4 of December?
December 25th.
Yeah, December 2025. So it's a little bit of a quick timeline here. And we just got started last week.
Okay. So this falls under the town bylaws, not the zoning bylaws?
Correct.
Under the stormwater management bylaw, right? And so this, so what you, the work you were doing will be updating the current stormwater management bylaw?
We will be reviewing the stormwater management bylaw, confirming that it complies with the MS4 permit requirements. If changes need to be made, it will be updated to the existing stormwater management bylaw.
And then you'll be working with Joe. It's under, it's under the DPW's jurisdiction then, correct?
Yes, because we don't have DPW commissions anymore, so it'll be my jurisdiction.
Okay. And so, and then any updating of BMPs would be something that you'd be doing with them?
Yes.
Okay. So it's really not in our wheelhouse, so to speak.
It's pretty typical to make these presentations.
Yeah, okay.
Do you want me to explain some of the requirements? Do you have any questions?
Well, they're going to affect, I would think they're going to affect whoever is working on the projects that we will be approving through site plan, right?
Yes, we haven't finalized the actual size that will trigger it. The MS4 permit requires every project, at least one acre or larger, has to comply with these regulations.
Okay.
Some towns choose a smaller value just to capture more projects. And we'll be refining that with Joe and his team.
So what's the role of the planning board? Is the role to maybe kind of like advising consent on that, or just give you, like, do, I mean, do we have a say in the size? I mean, we can do some local bylaw things, but we could do that as citizens as well as?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Can I make a quick disclaimer?
Yeah, please.
I think what happens here is the, this bylaw goes through as a town bylaw, and then we kind of sit back and make sure that our rules and regs comply with the town bylaw.
Okay.
Or at least point to it.
And that would be the subdivision rules and regs?
Correct.
Okay. And then anything having to do?
Or whatever else we have under site plan.
That's right, yeah, okay. And that would be the job of our peer review engineers?
Yeah, or us.
Or us, yeah, but we depend.
Without whom, whoever, yeah.
Yeah, we depend on the peer review engineers to help us with that stuff. And then I'm, I'm sure that any engineer working on a project would need to be aware of the new laws as they apply in Pembroke and would be applying them. So the peer review engineering process is a check on that?
Yep.
Okay.
And, and the reason this is being done is because the MS4 requirements are stricter than the Mass. Stormwater Handbook requirements.
So the federal requirements are stricter than the state requirements?
Yes.
Okay. Gotcha.
So we're going to be incorporating phosphorus and nitrogen removal, stricter total suspended solids removal.
Stricter sediment erosion controls.
Yep, stricter. And typically nowadays, when a project goes in front of Conservation Commission, they have to provide an operation and maintenance manual for their stormwater measures on a commercial development site or a definitive subdivision site.
review account for SP 5-23, 33 Riverside Drive to original applicant. The as-built drawings were approved on July 14, 2025. So.
I'll make a motion to return $4,538.53 to the original applicant for SP 5-23.
Great, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, Heather.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Alicia.
Aye.
Stefan.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. All right. Do we have anything else?
No.
We don't?
We do not.
Well, before you do that, I just want to go over the upcoming meetings, because there's a lot of interest in the meeting on September 22. All right, so let me just briefly go through them.
Yep.
I promise, less than a minute. Okay, upcoming meeting, September 8, 2025. We have SP 6-25 site plan for proposed battery storage units. Again, go to the website, because the public hearing notices will be posted there for these. And then we have also number 2502, four home subdivision from 145 Washington Street and zero Misty Meadow Road. Do you have those posted to the website yet?
Correct.
Okay, so the plans are posted to the Pembroke website, so please, take a look. We'll also have a public hearing for amending provisions applicable to kennels and related sections thereto to be consistent with an act to increase kennel safety. This is a zoning bylaw change, which is required by the state, that will be going on to the fall town warrant, correct? Okay, there will be public hearings on that, too. September 22, 2025, site modification for 94 West Elm and 2501, public hearing for definitive subdivision entitled Weathervein at Pembroke Country Club located 94 West Elm Street consisting of 177 single-family houses. Those are the public hearings that we continue tonight. Please, again, go to the website. Those plans are up there for folks to look at. All right. Having no, and seeing no additional items before the board, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, Heather.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Alicia.
Aye.
Stefan.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay. We have routine review of routine administrative matters and possible vote to accept minutes of recent board meetings.
Do I not vote on meeting minutes if I wasn't here?
I think you're allowed to, because you've read through them.
I did, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Has everyone read through the minutes of Monday, July 28, 2025?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Then why don't you make a motion for us?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from Monday, July 28, 2025.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call vote, Heather.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Alicia.
Aye.
Stefan.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. All right. Do we have anything else?
No.
We don't?
We do not.
Well, before you do that, I just want to go over the upcoming meetings, because there's a lot of interest in the meeting on September 22. All right, so let me just briefly go through them.
Yep.
I promise, less than a minute. Okay, upcoming meeting, September 8, 2025. We have SP 6-25 site plan for proposed battery storage units. Again, go to the website, because the public hearing notices will be posted there for these. And then we have also number 2502, four home subdivision from 145 Washington Street and zero Misty Meadow Road. Do you have those posted to the website yet?
Correct.
Okay, so the plans are posted to the Pembroke website, so please, take a look. We'll also have a public hearing for amending provisions applicable to kennels and related sections thereto to be consistent with an act to increase kennel safety. This is a zoning bylaw change, which is required by the state, that will be going on to the fall town warrant, correct? Okay, there will be public hearings on that, too. September 22, 2025, site modification for 94 West Elm and 2501, public hearing for definitive subdivision entitled Weathervein at Pembroke Country Club located 94 West Elm Street consisting of 177 single-family houses. Those are the public hearings that we continue tonight. Please, again, go to the website. Those plans are up there for folks to look at. All right. Having no, and seeing no additional items before the board, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, Heather.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Alicia.
Aye.
Stefan.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you so much, folks. We're done.